Meeting of the City of Arcata's Planning Commission. We're holding this meeting as a webinar in response to local efforts. Be unmuted and you'll have three minutes to speak. If you're on your phone, you can also join the meeting and comment by calling the number and meeting ID, all of which are on the bottom of the screen. Press star nine to let the clerk know you wish to speak. When the public comment period opens, you will be unmuted and you'll have three minutes to speak. This meeting is now officially called to order. Director Loya, can we get a roll call?
Yeah, absolutely. Chair of the State Elcock.
Here.
Vice Chair Mayor.
Here.
Commissioner Barstow.
Here.
Commissioner White.
Here.
Commissioner Tegney.
Here.
Commissioner Figueroa.
Here.
And Commissioner Davies did inform me that he would be here shortly.
Okay, and at the staff's table, we have David Loya, Director of Community Development. Do we have any other staff members joining us?
Not tonight.
No, you're on your own. All right. So let's move to oral communication. This time is provided for people to address the commission or submit written communications on matters not on tonight's agenda. At the conclusion of all written and oral communications, the commission may respond to statements. We usually don't, but we may. Any request that requires permissions actions will be set by the commission for a future agenda or referred staff. Is there any member of the public who would like to address the commission?
If you'd like to address the commission on matters not on the agenda tonight, please raise your hand. And I will note for the record that Commissioner Davies did just join the meeting. I'm not seeing any.
Okay, so on to the consent calendar. The only item that we have is the minutes from February 8th. Does anyone need to pull that item or can we get a motion to approve?
I'll make them approve.
We have a first by Commissioner Tegney. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
It was a tie. I'm going to say a second by Commissioner Barstow. Can we get a roll call, please?
Oh yeah, Commissioner Barstow.
Aye.
Commissioner Tegney.
Aye.
Commissioner Davies.
Aye.
Commissioner Figueroa.
Aye.
Commissioner White.
Should I abstain? I was absent.
You may abstain. Taking the minutes into the record is administrative and you're not required to have attended. So you can abstain or you can vote on it. Okay? And Vice Chair Mayor.
Aye.
And Chair of the State Elcock.
Aye. So the consent calendar is approved. So tonight's one and only public hearing is the design review permit for the Hunt addition located at 100 East Seventh Street. If the addition is approved, the address would be 150 East Seventh Street. Before we open this to public hearing, do we have any commissions with an ex parte communications to disclose regarding this project? Okay, if not, can we get a staff report, please?
Yeah, absolutely. I'll be giving the staff report tonight. Joe Mateer did draft the report, but he is enjoying some well-deserved time off. So I'll provide the staff report tonight and the agent and the owner are both in attendance, as are several other members, some of which, some of whom may wish to speak on the item. So I'll just begin by citing that the recommendation, I do want to advance a minor change and that's to reverse the order of the action to adopt the Class 31 exemption first. And then we recommend that you adopt the action with findings of approval and conditions for approval. So I'll just give a super high level staff report to orient the commission. Be happy to answer any questions you may have and then leave the detail to the applicant's agent. First, I'd like to notice that, or note that this project did come before you before. It was approved as a design review project in 2020 to make a slight modification to the shotgun house, the mini shotgun house, the Emily's House, that was adding an addition to the backside and then some improvements to the site and et cetera. Since that time, the owners' requirements for the property had changed and they worked with their architect to propose a new plan, which is included in the attachment B project description, site and floor plans and architectural elevations that you have before you tonight. And essentially what they're doing is adding a new, if the first house is a mini shotgun, this would be a micro shotgun with a more modern enclosure in between those two, joining them to provide a little bit more living space. We did take this new proposal to the Historic Landmarks Committee. This is a city historic landmark. And so we wanted to make sure that they had a chance to review it and make any comments on it that they wished to make. And as the staff report notes, we specifically requested that they address, you know, concern that there may be a false sense of history because there are some similarities between the original Emily's House and the new proposed addition that is separated from the glass or the more modern looking addition. And they did address that. They had fairly robust conversation around, you know, what it means to present a false sense of history and ultimately made a couple of really soft recommendations to the architect and left those decisions to the architect, citing that the design as presented was what they would consider approvable. And they ultimately made a recommendation to the Planning Commission that you do approve this plan the way that it is. And so the, you know, city prepared the findings and conditions. The applicant had submitted a letter that's in attachment B that explains sort of the rationale for the amendments and how they still adhere to the historic character of the building. And we would recommend at the staff level that you approve it. If you do get to the point of wishing to approve it, I have a couple of minor modifications I'd like to suggest to the action just for clarification purposes. Wouldn't amend the approval in any way, shape or form. And so we can get into that detail when you're ready to consider approval of this project. With that, I'll turn it over to the Planning Commission. If you have any questions about the project or the materials and/or you can ask the applicant for their presentation.
Before we open this to the public, is there any, oh, Commissioner Barstow, you have a question?
A quick question. What is the categorical exemption 31?
Yeah, that's a great question. Categorical exemption 31 is the Secretary of Interior standard. So it is suggested that the project comports with the Secretary of Interior standards for the treatment of historical resources and that it's compatible with that finding.
Ms. Mayor.
Um, yeah, I, I, I know, Director Loya, that you said that you would suggest making some slight changes to the material that we've got before us here and that you would tell us what those changes would be when we're getting ready to consider approval. But just so that we have a fuller picture in our minds, maybe you could explain them now?
Sure, yeah, they're really administrative. So in the first paragraph of the action, I would propose that the last line include Exhibit 1 and Exhibit 2 right after findings of approval and conditions of approval respectively. So just references on the action, those exhibits that are named as the attachment. And then under the project description, at the end of the very first sentence, I would ask you that you add, known as Emily's House, comma, more specifically described in the plan set. And then in parentheses, Exhibit 3. So incorporating attachment B into the action so that we have a record of what was actually approved, attached to the action. And then the last thing would be under the environmental section, where it says adopted California Environmental Quality Act exemption, historical resources, Class 31. Just add prior to adopting the action. So it's real clear that you made that sequoia determination first.
Hey, thanks very much. That helps.
Sure.
So if we don't have any further questions at this time, let's open the public hearing and let's let the applicants have the first word. Are the applicants here? Would they like to address the commission?
Go ahead, Julian, and I can bring up the plan set if you'd like me to.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Yeah, yep. Sorry, there was a little delay there in unmuting myself. So, yeah, thank you, David. And if everybody doesn't already know, my name is Julian Berg, the architect on the project. And David, so I will go through each page of the plan set and just have you forward when I say so. Does that sound good?
Sure.
Okay. Yeah, so let's take a look at the site plan. As David mentioned, we are already under construction for the remodel of the existing shotgun style house. And it's actually nearing completion as we speak. We've completely remodeled the inside and we're doing, did a lot of rehabilitation work on the outside, which is still underway and it will be painted soon. We put a whole new foundation under it and all new windows and doors. It's really coming along. And now we're heading into phase two because the owner has decided they would like to have more living space for the future, thinking they might need in-home care at some point or an additional family member to live here. So that's spawned the need to do an addition onto the house, which will be about 580 square feet to the northeast. And as we talked about to the Historical Commission, adding on to an existing older home, it is a challenging design problem. So what I came up with in many discussions with Jen and Howard Hunt is to do a more modern glass enclosed connecting space, which you can see in the center, and then doing a sort of a smaller version of the shotgun house to the side, which would house the bedroom and additional bathroom space. And we are having the parking at the rear, which was under the previous permit. There is going to be a small wood deck facing southeast between the existing and the addition. That's the basic rundown of the site plan. Let's go ahead and go to the second key, which is the floor plan. This is fun. I get to boss David around. It's not too often I get to do that.
Happy to serve.
Yeah. So you can see on the right side, we have the parking area and then I, we're going to do a brick walkway connecting into the, a new entry porch. And then that leads you into the windowed, you know, connecting space, which is going to have, you know, your entry area and dining space. And then from that, you'll enter into a hall, which would have a sink, another bathroom, which is a little bit larger in case there's a handicap person, and then the bedroom to the south side. And all the doors will be three feet to allow for easier handicap access if needed. And you can see the deck on the left side there tucked into the corner. And then let's go ahead and take a look at the elevations. So this drawing here shows how we're matching the shotgun style to the addition on the right side, but then we've got glass windows connecting the two with a lower roof line. And once again, the addition is set back over 13 feet, 13 and a half feet, to really allow the existing house to be the prominent feature. We're going to be matching the siding, the textures and dimensions of the existing on the addition for the most part. We are thinking about painting the whole addition a different color from the main house, which would be white. And the addition could be a grayish color to kind of differentiate the two and work with the Secretary of Interior standards showing that the new is differentiated from the old. Yeah, well, let's go ahead and I'll show you the other sides. Below, you see the east side facing the gravel entry drive. You can see the lower hip roof of the addition and then the larger hip roof of the shotgun house beyond. And on the right side, that is an addition that's already been added on, which houses the bathroom and closet space for the new house. So it's really been fun to take an existing historical structure and revitalize it for a modern way of living by opening up the walls and making it function a lot better. And it's very, it'll be very energy efficient with all new insulation and windows and heating system. And then on the north side, you can see the entry porch in the center with a smaller glass door set relative to the south side and then smaller windows leading into the bathroom. So with that, that's what I have to say. And if you guys have any questions, I'm here to discuss it.
Thank you. Do we have any members of the commission that have any follow-up? Oh no, I'm sorry. No, no, we're opening up this up to the public. Lost track for a second. Are there any members of the public who would like to address this project?
Go ahead, Kurt.
Very briefly, I just appreciate the commission's approving of any plan that will help increase density in the city. Thanks for your time.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I don't see anyone else who appears to be wanting to speak on this item.
Julian, do you have anything that you'd like to add or is there anyone else?
Yeah, I could just add about our presentation to the Historical Society. That was on January 20th. We had a really productive conversation and all in all, they were really pleased with the plans and the project and loved it. There was discussion about how far we would go in matching the trim and siding of the existing house, you know, how far we would differentiate it. But in the end, they agreed that the way it was designed was harmonious and, you know, being sensitive to what was there. So. Yeah.
Okay, thank you. All right, so I guess, did anybody else, any other member of the public, David, decide? Yeah, okay, so the public comment period now is closed and it's time for commissioners deliberation. Please raise your hand if you have anything that you'd like to, Commissioner Barstow?
Yeah. I'm kind of disappointed in this for a couple of reasons. But first, I just want to say that the Hunts and their past projects have been very sensitive to the historical context of the houses they've worked on. And this is not a major complaint. Well, it is a major complaint, but it's not one that would sink the project, I don't think. Emily's House is a completely unique house in Arcata. And so my first preference would be to do nothing to it. The addition that was added to the back was very good in that it did not change the front facade of the house. It's still Emily's House. My qualm is that, given the, the design of the facade, maybe we could look at the, the plan of the, of the south facade. And I realize that looking at the facade drawing this way gives you a distorted view of the way it's going to look because the new part is set back. So it, it, it will not be as bad as it looks here. And by bad, I mean that suddenly with this addition, Emily's House disappears, basically. Emily's House becomes a, just a part of this larger, this larger mass. And, you know, I, well, for me, this is one of my favorite houses in Arcata and I really hate to see it changed this way so that this will be a negative in terms of the, the look and feel and the importance of this building. My, it's, and what particularly bothers me is the, the new gable roof. There's just a lot of mass there. And I'd suggest that just knocking that roof off would make it look a lot better and it would make, make it obvious that the, the new addition is a new addition, which is one of the things that they look for in the Secretary of the Interior standards. So anyhow, that's my complaint. I don't think it's a deal breaker to me, but I'd be very, very sad to see the house changed this way.
Thank you. Do we have any other commissioners? Commissioner Tegney?
Yeah. I share John's concerns. I, every time I go by Emily's House, I smile and think about simpler times and that somebody put so much charm into such a small space and how incredible it is that somebody could have lived in that small little house. It really takes me back historically. I super enjoy that about Emily's House. However, that said, I can't imagine holding the owner to have to keep it as a museum piece for the rest of us. And I appreciate that everybody's trying, the architect, the applicant, to do the best for Emily's House as they possibly can. And, you know, I support the project. I, it changes Emily's House forever. And it, if I walked by with somebody that didn't know what Emily's House was before, I would have to explain, well, the rest of that didn't used to be there. Imagine this little six or 700 square foot house, you know, with a family in it or something from the 1800s. That's a different look and I mean, it's a different time, a different feel. However, I do appreciate all the effort that's going into keeping the charm and doing everything we can with, you know, anything else that you added besides the previous addition in the back would change Emily's House. So here we are. Thank you for your efforts to do as little or to do it as appropriately as possible.
Thank you. Commissioner Mayor?
Yeah, a couple of things. First, I really appreciate any efforts that property owners make to ensure that their historic properties remain in active use and in good repair. And this certainly is an effort in that direction. It would be, it would be great if that were possible by retaining the, you know, the bulk of the facade that you see from, from the street, from Seventh Street, meaning moving up most of the new work to the back as the original proposal had done. I, I'm, I'm a little bit taken aback because this proposal has come to us in pieces, making it very difficult for us to say no to this two-part proposal. And, and, and yet, you know, I can certainly see what the owners want to get out of it. So I, I'm just wondering if, if in the discussions with the other committee, there was any discussion about somehow moving the additional addition further back from the facade so that the facade that is presented to the public on Seventh Street looks more like the Emily's House that, you know, the historic values have, you know, brought to us over the decades. But I, I would have, I would move to, I would approve this addition if it's going to make the house, the property as a whole usable for another century to its current and potential future owners.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, well, I agree with what everything everyone said. Julian Berg does such great work. I think it looks fantastic. So do we have any emotion perhaps to approve? With David's amendments? Beginning with the sequoia exemption? I need one of you to make a motion or not.
I'll make a motion to approve with the sequoia exemption as David outlined earlier.
Do we have a, we have a first from Commissioner Tegney? Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second by Commissioner Davies. Can we get a roll call? Or David, is that what you needed as far as the motion?
Yeah, I understood. I understood the motion to be to approve the California Environmental Quality Act, Class 31 Historical Resources Environmental Review Exemption and then adopt the action with findings of approval and conditions of approval with the recommendation, recommended modifications that I've mentioned earlier.
That's exactly the way I informed my motion.
Okay.
Can we get a roll call?
Yeah. Commissioner Barstow? Commissioner Tegney?
Aye.
Commissioner Davies?
Aye.
Commissioner White?
Aye.
Commissioner Figueroa?
Aye.
Vice Chair Mayor?
Aye.
And Chair of the State Elcock?
Aye. All right. Motion approved. So next, we're moving on to business items. The local coastal element update. Director Loya, do you have a staff report or?
I do have a very brief staff report. I'm super excited to be bringing this forward. As the commission may recall, we had several meetings in 2020 where we brought individual pieces of the local coastal element forward. Let's say we're getting completed. We'd been working with the local coastal commission staff to, to conduct a review of those materials and we're intending to bring the local coastal element and zoning that would the local coastal element and zoning that would implement that together a lot earlier than this. The coastal commission had some staffing changes, and so our timeline shifted gears. And we are now ready to release as an integrated document, this document before you. And this is the local coastal elements, effectively an element of the general plan that implements the policy within the coastal commission. And we will then be bringing you sometime shortly in the next month or so, the underlying zoning that would go along with this. Now, you have reviewed all of this. You did make some comments previously when it was in pieces. And we've compiled those into the single document. I don't have notes right now on the discussion items that we had before. They were fairly high level. But, you know, certainly if there's anything in this document that you feel like we missed, we can take notes on that and go back and do a second due on it. The intent for tonight is that, you know, this is just a you know, public meeting to release the document, take information. There's no decision necessary at this time. Really, it's so that the planning commission, the city council, and the public have plenty of time to sit with the document and review it, provide comment, and for staff to respond and make those necessary edits to, you know, to get a strong document. I will point to, you know, a couple of notable sections. Obviously, this is an update from our existing local coastal program. Right now, our coastal land use element is about 20 pages long. This one is significantly longer. Life seems to get more complex the longer it goes on. But this also adds a new section on sea level rise and has some additional detail in each of these different policy areas, in particular around water quality, where the coastal commission has essentially required us to replicate what the state already regulates in the MS4 requirements, but they want to see it replicated here in this document. And then we go into each of these different resource areas in more detail. And so I'd be happy to, you know, respond to questions, or if you want to, you know, get a mini presentation on any one of these elements, these chapters within this element. Or if you want me to zoom back out and explain again how the coastal land use element fits within the context of the LCP, I can do that. But I'm kind of relying on some of the legwork that we've done before previously to bring us to this point and allow you to, you know, start reviewing this document in the whole. So with that, I'll, you know, turn it over to questions. I know there are several people in the attendees tonight that wish to speak on this item. And I'll leave it to you.
Mayor?
Yeah. Beside the substance of the draft, which I'm really, really excited to see finally after all these years on our third attempt, I'm wondering about a couple of process things that maybe we could talk about or you could at least clarify. The first is we're scheduled to have a public hearing on this draft plus the draft language of the coastal zoning code. How long ahead of that meeting will we actually have to review the draft zoning code? This one, we had three days. And, you know, obviously, that's a pretty quick time to do a fine-tooth comb review of a document like this. So is there any way that we would be able to get that draft zoning code with a little bit more time to dig into it?
We'll try and release it as soon as we possibly can. There's no decision that's being requested tonight, and really, this is just an opportunity to see the document for the first time. So even though you just got it three days ago, you don't have to do anything with it. We can, you know, review this for the next, you know, indefinitely. I mean, I'll be perfectly frank. I've been working on this document my entire career at the city of Arcata. It was one of the first projects I started working on. If I finish it before my career ends here, I'll consider that a win. So please, take as much time as you feel like you need. The community should feel like they have ample opportunity to review this. We do have a coastal commission grant that is closing out in April. And essentially, you know, the original understanding is that we were going to, you know, complete and have submitted for recertification of this new document. There's no way we're going to meet that timeline. When we agreed to do that, we didn't know we were going to have COVID. When we agreed to do that, we didn't know that we were going to have the staffing changes at the coastal commission. The community is under a lot of pressure to have lots of review of lots of long-range planning documents right now, and we don't want to pile on you know, this document. If it needs to, it can sit. But I do think that, you know, there's a lot of great material in here. I think we, once we get into it, we'll find that we'd be really excited to implement this in exchange for the existing local coastal program. So you know, so no pressure, but you know, the time is there and, you know, certainly, you know, you'll want to see this as a companion with the zoning for a long enough period of time that, you know, you can think through it, and that time is available.
Okay, great. Another question is, you know, this is a really long document. There's a lot of detail in there, and of course, we know that's where all the devils live. And so I'm wondering if it makes sense to for commissioners or members of the public to actually submit comments to staff in writing so that we can get into, you know, that level of detail that would probably bore a public hearing silly, but that are, you know, that may become important. And then to leave the public discussions largely for the bigger issues, is that something that would be reasonable for commissioners to expect to do?
Yeah, I would follow the commission's lead on how they want to review the document. Certainly, that seems like a reasonable approach.
Okay. And then I guess the other thing I'm wondering about is because all these documents are having to emerge at the same time, this one's going to be part, an element of the updated general plan. We're also going to have parts of the gateway plan that overlap with this one, et cetera. Are there going to be opportunities when we can actually look at the whole thing together before this draft gets sent to the coastal commission or even to the city council for that matter?
The whole thing, meaning the entire general plan?
Yeah, I guess in particular, I'm thinking in terms of the general plan and some sections of, I mean, the gateway plan and some sections of the general plan, including the conservation and open space sections or elements and the public safety element, if there are going to be new drafts coming forward for that. And you see where this is going, right?
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, again, you know, there's really no, you know, pressure on this document at this point. And so, again, that's totally to the commission's, you know, you know, just deliberations if they want to, you know, hold on to this and wait until sometime next year. You know, I think it's ready. I think that we can go through a public process. I think that we can go through an approval process that is running in parallel with the other general plan elements, including the gateway area plan. The way that the two documents fit together right now, there's kind of a placeholder for areas that are in this plan that are also in the gateway area plan in terms of the zoning type, and it retains, it effectively retains, for the most part, the zoning or land use designations that are, you know, currently extant, with the exception of the industrial zoning in the areas that are designated for the gateway, and instead it calls those coastal mixed use. And so that what it effectively does is puts a placeholder so that when we're ready for an amendment that would include the changes that we're making in the gateway area plan, whatever those ultimately end up being, we can drop those in as a new coastal, local coastal program update, and they would, you know, slide neatly into the mixed use category, and we won't have to go through the, you know, the analysis at that point to change it from industrial, limited and industrial general, what they're currently zoned, to this more mixed use category. That analysis will have already been done. But none of what's proposed in the gateway area plan will be effective in the coastal zone until it's certified in the coastal zone as a local coastal program update amendment. So, you know, it's certainly, you know, we've designed it so that they can run on parallel tracks as opposed to serial tracks, but, you know, it's really up to the decision makers to guide that. You know, how you'd like to do that. And we could certainly have, you know, study sessions or, you know, new business items that dig into more detail on, you know, how these two things overlap. We've talked about it a little bit over the last couple of years, how they would fit together. So yeah, again, I would really defer to, you know, the will of the commission on how they want to handle that.
Okay, thanks. Do we have any other commissioners with recommendations to add? Commissioner Tagney?
Yeah, I just have a procedural question. Are there projects in the coastal zone that are being held up right now because this element not being complete?
I would say that there's a pretty big mismatch, for the most part, between where we'd like to go and where this document puts us. I can't point to a specific project that I would say is held up as a result of the current state of the local coastal program, but there are all kinds of, you know, antiquated procedures that we are constantly trying to figure out, you know, workarounds for in order to implement this document along with our current, you know, general plan and land use code. And so, yeah, we run into, you know, potential conflicts quite frequently between the two documents. But, you know, what I would, what I guess I would say is the it's primarily an administrative challenge, I guess, at this point than it is a, you know, a land use challenge for, you know, for property owners. I think that when we implement this, we'll have a lot more flexibility to drive development in the directions that, you know, allow us to, you know, adapt to sea level rise, which is not in our current documents. There's nothing that supports that in our current LCP or resolve on land use challenges. You know, one that we had recently that, you know, we ultimately navigated a way through was the Redwood Coast Montessori that opened up in the Timpan building. And it was through a, you know, an interpretation that we were allowed to navigate to yes on that project. A very simplistic and read of the local coastal program would have basically put the kibosh on that project altogether. And so we worked with our local coastal commission staff to, you know, ensure that, you know, the interpretation we were making, even though it was somewhat creative, still fit within the parameters, you know, of the local coastal program and our land use code. Because on the one hand, in the land use code, it says that schools are principally permitted in that zone. And then on the local coastal program side, it required a pretty, you know, nuanced interpretation. So so there are some challenges, but I can't point to a specific project and say, see, this is what's, you know, a big failure right now. I'll point to you just real quick. If you look on packet page 40 at this figure C21, we have this new area. You can see it in better detail in the call-out box in the insert where we'd be adding this coastal commercial visitor serving overlay. And this is one of the ways where we can give additional uses that would, you know, provide for a transition, an incentive to transition from existing uses to uses that are going to be more readily adaptable or retreatable. And so right now, if you look at an aerial image, for example, of South G Street, you'll see, you know, two things that you never want to see in an area that's subject to coastal flooding. A bunch of scrap metal and, you know, you know, old cars and, you know, you know, land uses that are basically outdoor storage, all of which can become, you know, mobile or the contaminants within them can become mobile in the coastal waters if there's a coastal flood. And the second is all of the housing in that area. There's a ton of housing down there that's nearby, you know, slews or, you know, that if there was overland flooding would be impacted. So this coastal commercial visitor serving would provide a transition for those uses that would allow them to, you know, clean up the contaminants and put those properties into other uses, perhaps an RV park or something like that that's less susceptible to flooding and less damaging if it does get flooded. Or, you know, to transition some of those, you know, those home sites into other uses. And again, part of the, you know, the gateway planning process is to ensure that there's new development that would absorb some of this relocation over time. So that's one of the ways those fit together. But none of that is available to us right now. Right now, the majority of those sites are commercial industrial, which equates to our industrial limited, so lower, you know, lower impact industrial uses. And all of those existing junkyards basically have no motivation to transition their use. So the sooner we implement this, the sooner we can start incentivizing folks to, you know, make those transitional land uses and clean that area up and prepare us for, you know, success as we start to adapt and retreat.
Okay, thank you, David. And I have a follow-up question, if you don't mind. Administering the local coastal element, page 36 of the packet discusses that applicants for land development would be coming to the city. And this is something that I feel like I should already know, but I need a little clarification on this. After the local coastal element has been ratified through the coastal commission and is part of our general plan, then applicants for development in that zone just come to the city and don't have to apply any permit application of any sort to the coastal commission. Is that correct?
Yeah, that is correct. This figure C1-1 actually mirrors our existing local jurisdiction and categorical exclusion areas. And so there's, you know, some changes I would expect to see in this map over time, but the the areas that are cross-hatched on that are the coastal commission's retained jurisdiction. Anyone in that land would have to go to the coastal commission to get a permit. And then anyone that's inside the coastal zone but outside that cross-hatched area would come to the city to get a coastal permit.
I'm sorry, which is the cross-tatch? You're looking at C-2-1?
Oh, no, I'm sorry. C-1-1 on packet page 35.
Thank you. Okay. All right. Thank you. I got it now.
Yeah. And so there are some areas, the coastal zoning is a little odd because there are some areas where you have to go to the coastal commission to get a permit. That's labeled here as permit jurisdiction. It should probably be labeled as retained jurisdiction. There are some areas where you come to the city to get a coastal permit, but you're in an appealed area, and so it's appealable to the coastal commission. If someone's aggrieved by the decision that we make, they can ask the coastal commission to review it. There are areas that are in non-appeal areas, and so we make the decision, and the decision could be appealable internally, but they can't appeal that to the coastal commission. So there's kind of a bunch of different layers. It's like a layer cake.
Okay. That makes sense. And it looks like South G Street is within the permit jurisdiction of the coastal commission.
Portions of it are, yeah. Portions of it are.
All right. That's it for me. Thank you. All right. That's it for me. Thank you.
Commissioner Figueroa?
Hey, David, I was just wondering if city staff, I know it's it's pretty hot off the press last Wednesday, the twenty twenty two sea level rise technical report came out from NOAA and just wondering, you know, just from a a high level view, if any of the staff has had the opportunity to review it yourself, if it's if this new report affects anything related to your coastal hazard section and sea level rise sections related to this new reporting.
We haven't assessed the the impact of that on our, you know, our coastal adaptation planning. But in general, you know, without saying too much about the specific, you know, relationship between our document and that that new guidance. What I would say is this is that our our document is, and I, you know, don't mean to be glib about this, but our document is intended to be resilient to those changes in in scientific data. Many of the of the jurisdictions and certainly the coastal commission try and take the approach that they want to see, you know, your sea level rise projections for elevation over time. And and we can do a a study session on this in more detail. I'm not sure if you were there the last time we did a study session on on this, but the city of Arcata has taken the approach to set specific thresholds because there's myriad calculations out there with myriad thresholds depending on, you know, tolerance, you know, whether you want the, you know, the, you know, point five percent, you know, you know, one in twenty chance of of exceedance or, you know, so on and so forth. So so what we've done, instead of trying to play the, you know, the game of, you know, all these different elevations over time, we've just said, look, we can protect this area to threshold X. That might be twenty years. That might be fifty years. And then part of the permit process, part of the approval process is to transfer that responsibility through the permit, through the conditions of approval to those private landowners and or to, you know, the permit holder, if it's a public entity, to acknowledge and, you know, take on responsibility for, you know, for those those, you know, future impacts that we are fully anticipating will happen. And recognizing that they might happen a much shorter period of time than current projections allow for, and that they're taking the responsibility for removal of that. You know, that infrastructure, whatever the built environment is. We also, I think, need to be fully cognizant that, you know, if there's, you know, major catastrophe, if we have, you know, sudden increases in sea level rise, you know, whether it's new infrastructure that's, you know, permitted between now and then, or whether it's the existing infrastructure that's in that zone that, you know, is theoretically the inundation zone, you know, upper upper limits, that, you know, we as a society are going to be responsible for for managing that removal anyway. Most people are more than likely just going to walk away from those properties and they'll be condemned. And so, you know, certainly we need to prepare for that. Sorry, I went off on a little tangent there.
I remember you discussing that. Thanks for the reminder. Appreciate it. Yeah.
Commissioner Barstow, do you have your hand up?
Well, I have a couple of questions to clarify things. See, this is on packet page eighty four, talking about habitat connectivity to allow species movement. And it talks about facilitating movement of wild animals along wildlife corridors. I assume that applies to fish also. And if it does, whether it's appropriate to mention fish here as well as wildlife?
Certainly. Yeah, we can add fish.
And then on packet page eighty five, eight, three, forty eight, rising groundwater under agricultural resources. It says depth of fill must allow continuation of wetland characteristics such that no net loss of wetlands shall occur. Does that imply that in in the case where fill material is being added that they would also have to restore that added fill to wetland condition?
I'm sorry, Commissioner Barstow, can you point out the page number again?
Sorry, it's packet page eighty five.
And it was
The Rising Groundwater article. And my question is, after you, after they install the fill material, will they be required to restore that area to a wetland condition?
Yeah, I think that that is the intent. So the the coastal commission has approved in many cases sort of a setback dike where there are areas that are that are improved. And so I don't want to, you know, imply through this answer that there that you might, that you would never see a, you know, a dike placed behind a restoration area. But I think the intent of this particular policy is in the event that we have rising groundwater and or, you know, landward migration of, you know, the tidal zone that that balancing the ag policies in the coastal act with the, you know, restoration policies and adaptation policies that we would allow for in these agricultural resource lands, the ability to create new habitat through basically terraforming, you know, through through creating new elevations that support the the types of habitats that we're losing. If you look in our sea level rise evaluations, our vulnerability analyses that were adopted several years ago, and I can bring those forward as well. They're also on our website, so you can certainly research this. But we asked Trinity Associates and Northern Hydrology to each independently assess the changes in habitat zones, given different levels of of sea level rise inundation. And so they looked at a half meter, a meter, a meter and a half and two meters. And essentially what happens in Humboldt Bay on the North Bay in particular, is that everything is so shallow that as soon as there's, you know, I believe it was a half meter increase in sea level rise, you you completely eliminate all of the salt marsh habitat and everything turns to mud flat. So you can imagine if you're standing on Klopp Lake looking bayward, it's basically, you know, endless mud flats. And then if you look over to the the treatment ponds, you can see, you know, around the slough edges, there's some salt marsh habitat. Half meter increase in sea level rise would turn everything into mud flat. There wouldn't be any salt marsh habitat. So the idea here is that we may, we may have a beneficial, you know, there's the salt marshes have many beneficial purposes, both for, you know, habitat, carbon sequestration, you know, the list goes on and on. And so we may find ourselves in the future, you know, having to fill wetlands to create wetlands of a different type.
Thank you. And I have one other, one other question. Packet page one hundred and two, talking about protecting agricultural land. My question is, does the the language here, would it create a problem for the city to convert agricultural land to living shoreline, for example?
I mean, again, I don't mean to be glib, but I don't think we have much choice about that. And we're we're pretty much dead set for, you know, the next sixty years of sea level rise. There's absolutely nothing that we can do to change the next sixty years. We're really looking at, you know, tweaking the trajectory in the future beyond that. Because there's enough, you know, greenhouse gases baked into the atmosphere already to to create that level of sea level rise. And so it certainly, you know, the coastal act does, you know, look to protect both, you know, habitat qualities and agricultural uses. I think the intent of, you know, this policy is to, you know, emphasize those agricultural lands, especially where they're prime agricultural lands, and that we can provide protection in front of those agricultural lands to maintain them or to continue to to maintain the the structures in front of those agricultural lands to maintain them. But, you know, ultimately, in the long run, we're likely to lose that battle and that, you know, it's going to be more cost effective and you know, and there will be many mutual benefits to, you know, adaptation and retreat than there will be to trying to maintain agricultural lands indefinitely.
Okay. My my thought was that that this this language might create the impression that we we would never convert agricultural land to anything else.
Yeah, I think the intent is to recognize that many of the existing agricultural lands on the bottom lands are former dike tidelands and that failure to maintain the protections that are in place now and potentially to to add to those protections not only means losing those ag lands, but it has impacts to, you know, infrastructure that, you know, other agencies own. It has impacts to infrastructure that, you know, that our community relies on, Highway one oh one, for example. And so the idea here is that it does give us a lever to pull. There's there's competing language in this document. It gives us a lever to pull to be able to continue to protect those ag lands that are former dike tidelands. But I I think we all recognize that we have to have, you know, Plan B, a retreat policy that allows us to transition those over time into, you know, baylands.
Do we have any members of the public who have any comments?
I see a couple of hands going up here.
Yeah.
Let's see. Colin, go ahead.
Thanks. Good evening, commissioners. This is Colin Fisk with CRTP, the Coalition for Responsible Transportation Priorities. Just a couple of comments. And I'll try to keep it at a pretty high level. But, you know, one of the comments that you probably won't be surprised to hear is about parking. There's a couple of parking policies in here at four point one point nine and then at nine point two point ten. And, you know, my concern is that these policies seem to take the kind of historical approach to parking policy, which is the assumption that transportation behavior is independent of parking provision. And so, you know, we have to provide quote unquote adequate parking because people are gonna drive and so they need a place to park. But, you know, we know now that in fact the provision of parking influences transportation behavior and and encourages driving. And so I guess what I would request is that instead of calling out parking, and I do appreciate that there's also, there are also policies proposed around public transportation, but I guess I would I would propose that instead of calling out parking and the provision of, you know, adequate parking and taking that sort of historical view of parking policy that instead we just focus on access and on providing, you know, adequate access with an emphasis on lower carbon and more sustainable forms of transportation. And my other comment is regarding the sea level rise strategies. And I do have a fair amount of concern over this because, you know, my read of of the document is that most of the sort of adaptation responsibility will be on the individual property owners and residents. And I think, you know, one of the reasons that's given in the text is that it's hard to find an equitable solution for relocating or otherwise, you know, taking on a broad scale adaptation policy at the city level. But I would say that if you leave it to individual property owners and particularly residents who are renters to respond individually, you're going to end up with probably an even more inequitable solution. And so I really think that the city needs to take, you know, a more proactive approach, recognizing how difficult that is and how much time that staff has put into this already. But you know, there needs to be a more proactive approach to ensuring equitable managed retreat and and not leaving that just up to individual property owners. Thank you.
Check, check. Am I on? In nineteen eighty. And the reason I bring this up is this coastal policy that we're discussing is fabulous. But there's no money. The city's broke. And the reason the city's broke is because single family residences are economically unsustainable. And that's what is entirely in the city. And and it's, it can't work. It's never going to work. And the city is in grave danger of being completely eliminated in the case of the Cascadia earthquake, for instance. Like, to not build a seawall at this point is is insane. But it's because there's no money. We can't. We don't have a, we can't afford it. So I bring up these issues because, you know, we're early in this process. But there's no money. So the first thing I might to urge the this planning commission is to please really think about rezoning the city to dramatically increase density so that we'll have a tax base so that we can afford to pay for the things that we need to survive as a city. And I'd also want to bring bring up at this point that the Cascadia earthquake is going to drop the city by about six feet. And it seems to me that that's a far more important consideration as compared to sea level rise. But, I mean, I guess that's kind of up to everybody else to decide, but it seems to me pretty clear. The city, if the Cascadia earthquake occurs today, probably won't survive. It's just an M nine earthquake is horrible. And then we're going to be knee deep in sewage from the Arcata Marsh. So we gotta, I think we gotta pay attention here. We need more money. The only way to get is to get a bigger tax base. And the only way to do that is to rezone the city. And again, I I like to remind you real quick, it costs a thousand dollars a foot to redo our sewer lines. We have ten, twenty miles of that to do. The Arcata Marsh is fifty million in arrears. We need a seawall. The city buildings will not survive an M nine. They need to be reinforced. The schools need to be reinforced. This is a four hundred million dollar problem. Please, people, pay attention. It's fixable. It seems insurmountable, but it's not. We can do this if we just increase the population and the density. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Kurt. Chris, go ahead.
Hello, how are you doing this evening? Just a couple of questions. I didn't realize that the local coastal element update was available, so I haven't really had a chance to review that. But mostly, you know, I'm looking at the discussion you're you're you've had tonight. And, you know, specifically, how how will this local coastal element update that you're proposing affect the planning issues with the wastewater plant in the future? I mean, it sounds like you're looking, you know, you're you're talking about levees or rebuilding a plateau to recreate, you know, the existing experience. But I, you know, I'm just curious why there hasn't been more discussion about a secondary plant at a different location and some of those ideas. Anyway, I hope to hear more about that in the future. And I, you know, you you talk about the industrial properties on South G flooding and rusted metal and the 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 little bit of housing down there being affected with all those rental up and the, the, the little bit of housing down there being affected with all those rental apartments and homes and stuff. And I'm just, you know, I, 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 I'm gonna, I'm gonna review the document when I get a chance to. But, uh, it sounds like you're moving in the direction of trying to solve the wastewater plant issues, but, you know, hopefully more specific discussion will come out about that. Anyway, thank you so much for your work. And, uh, Commissioners, uh, I really enjoy your discussion and questions as well. Certainly keeps me engaged. Uh, thank you so much.
Thanks, Chris. Patricia, go ahead.
Um, yeah, so I, um, you know, just in the last couple of days, I've kind of gone over the basics of this, um, this plan. And, um, I think it leaves, um, a lot of questions. And it would be really nice to have a little bit more time to review it and and kind of dive into it a little bit more. Um, some of my concerns are, um, some of the language around filling in wetlands and kind of it has, like, and banking wetlands. Um, so on page thirty, I guess it's page sixty-two in packet pages, um, it kind of talks about, so, like, no let, net loss for the value of those wetlands. So I, I'm kind of, my concern for the Gateway area is some of the filling in of the wetlands. And I notice a lot of the wetlands are missing, um, on some of those diagrams. So, uh, so that is a little bit of my concern. And then the ministerial, um, withhold, the ministerial, uh, uh, that is a concern of, you know, how some of these projects can, that are, you know, potential projects coming in the area might, you know, not, uh, not be held to the same standard of the Coastal Commission, um, with the ministerial review. So, um, and then another concern of mine is for those people down on South G, um, and the single family houses. Um, may, it would be really nice if we could kind of give them some land to move or try to help them with moving their properties, um, and their house, their homes up out of that flood zone that see, with sea level rise. Um, so there's, it, anyways, it would be nice to have a little bit more time to go over this. It brings up a lot more questions than, um, you know, off that, that needs some more addressing. So, um, anyways, um, thank you for getting some, letting me get some of my concerns out there. And, yeah, I guess we'll, uh, see, sea level rise is coming. Um, I kind of hope that some of the environmental groups, um, are a little bit focused on this. Um, the envile- environmental aspects, um, of this beyond, you know, the bicycle path and the parking issues. Um, so it would be nice if we could all get together and kind of figure out, and you know, what impacts of big development coming into the Gateway District will have on the coastal, um, the coastal zone. So anyway, that's some of my, that's some of my thought on it. So thank you for giving me the opportunity to kind of get some of my questions out there. Thanks.
Thank you. Jennifer, go ahead.
Hi, everybody. Jennifer Calt with Humboldt Baykeeper. Um, I too have not had nearly enough time to review the document, but, um, I look forward to doing that more thoroughly. Um, I, it did jump out at me that the, um, protection zone for the South G Street areas is, um, still envisioned as a, a place to cluster new development. And, you know, I think, um, I can't really speak to the city's finances, but I think no matter how much money the city or the residents had, um, to throw at seawalls, I think that it would just really be buying a limited amount of time. And that I think, um, we should really be, um, very cautious about encouraging new development in, in areas that will be, uh, vulnerable to sea level rise, especially given that, uh, the city doesn't own the land or have permitting jurisdiction over those areas where, um, you know, some sort of shoreline armoring would be envisioned. You know, I think that's pretty speculative, given the way things have gone in the rest of California, that shoreline armoring is, is, uh, not really a solution. It's a short term Band-Aid, perhaps. You know, from the Baykeeper perspective, we agree, um, that getting some of those properties on South G Street cleaned up is a really good idea, um, especially before the groundwater elevation rises, um, you know, and floods them from, from below, basically, as sea level's rising. But, um, the idea of focusing new development in that area doesn't seem, um, well founded. So, um, we'll, we'll look more closely at this. And thank you for your time and for, um, all the thoughtful comments.
All right. Thank you. Um, I don't have any other attendees raising their hand at this point.
Okay, do we have any other Commissioners, um, with any other questions? Commissioner Figueroa?
Hey, David, I would recommend that you and city staff, um, take a look at, there's a great conservation project in regards of these concerns regarding filling wetlands to create wetlands. Um, looking at the Santa Lita Lagoon Restoration Project, which is occurring down in Southern California in San Diego, associated with the High Five North Corridor Project. But it's a large restoration project wherein which, you know, they're transforming an old lagoon, you know, that has been, you know, heavily modified, essentially, just with, you know, all the different things that go on in Southern California. But with the idea of generate, of taking existing wetlands, you know, restoring those, but also creating upland areas that will eventually become flooded and become new wetlands. So it's a project that's being taken on by, uh, Nature Collective, um, with this restoration, um, with this restoration. So just, uh, something for, uh, you know, just to kind of just give you guys better ideas and better things to, you know, to think about and, you know, to address sort of, you know, these sorts of situations, sorts of questions from the, uh, from the public.
Yeah, we'll certainly take a look at that. Um, you know, I will note that the, um, majority of the lands that are, um, landward of, you know, the existing title Prism, you know, were historically in the bay and would have been, um, you know, mud flats or salt marshes. So we don't have, you know, many jurisdictions have sort of fall back upland area to, you know, to prime for, uh, you know, for that, that future, um, you know, wetland state. Um, in our case, just because of the topography, we really have wetlands behind levees, you know, existing wetlands. Most of those ag fields type out as wetlands. Um, and, you know, so it would just really be, and then we have a different dynamic because the water comes up, you know, it'll basically drown out the existing wetlands. So, but I'll definitely take a look at that. Thanks for that hit.
Yeah, this is essentially creating highlands. Essentially, this is creating topographic highs in lowland areas. So it's, it's a really interesting project and it's, it was approved, you know, by everybody, um, down south, including the Coastal Commission. So it's definitely worth some checking out.
Okay, cool. Yeah, I'll, I'll check.
Commissioner Mayor?
Yeah, um, I, I, I've, I've, um, really appreciated all of, all of the, um, attention and level of detail that's gone into, um, the draft so far. I'm really looking forward to seeing, um, the draft zoning code that goes with it, um, which will explain how all of this or a lot of it is gonna, is gonna work. Um, there, there, there are a couple of questions I have about language. There, there are, um, some definitions which are included in the glossary, which I'm assuming are gonna be the same definitions that will appear in the general plan glossary. I'm, I'm particularly concerned about, um, the many times that the draft refers to, um, doing something um, to the extent feasible or to the extent practicable. And I think that, you know, getting, getting rigorous about feasible for whom and practicable for whom, who's gonna be paying, who's gonna be, um, having costs imposed on them, who might benefit, um, that, 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 that maybe is something deserving of a more complex set of definitions, um, including a process of determining what's really feasible and what's really practicable. And also, to, I, I, I guess I, I've, I've harped on this many times over the past, uh, ten or twelve years, um, since we've started talking about this. The, the extent to which either encouraging or allowing new development um, in the newly flood vulnerable areas, um, not, not only puts more people at risk even while it's creating revenue and nice economic activity, um, but also creates a constituency um, that in the future could push the city to, um, find it feasible to protect or armor areas, um, beyond the point at which it really will benefit the larger public good. So I, I think, I think that, you know, caution with regard to that interim period, you know, that fifty years when, you know, the Prism on, um, on South G Street, South A Street, H Street, um, maybe dry, but, uh, may not be, is, is really, really in order. And then the other set of, um, issues that came up several times in, in reading the language of the draft, it is, it does seem as though the city is tying its hands with regard to any possibility of, um, compensating owners to move, um, much less using its powers of eminent domain. And there are a couple of places where it actually appears, um, that, that that is precluded, where the city should really retain that as an option in this plan. Um, and, um, I, I think, you know, I, I can provide some way more detailed comments about where that's happening, but especially with regard to, um, wildlife and conservation for environmentally sensitive areas. If we tie our hands in this plan, it's gonna be hard to untie them later when we might want to, especially as uses, um, of land that is not already in public ownership change. One can envision, for example, among the few properties that aren't already in public hands owned by the city, um, someone proposing a very large, um, fish raising factory. Aquaculture is encouraged in the cul- in, in the Coastal Act. Um, but what happens if part of that site, um, which isn't protected in other ways, may also have some sensitive habitat? It would be great to not tie our hands with regard to, um, how the city can address that. Um, similarly, for the, you know, for the properties that remain, um, in private hands, the, the fact that, um, our agriculture designations include, um, large scale agricultural processing in effect factories. This could also be possible within, um, the coastal zone. And, and we don't necessarily have any way of, um, redirecting that right now. So, um, I, I guess when we see that zoning code, it's gonna be a lot clearer how these things would operate, but, but to the extent that the city needs to maintain, um, the full range of tools that we have to address, um, risks to public safety and to protect, um, options in the future, I, I would really hope that, um, the plan would allow us to do so and not close those things off. So, um, yeah, we're all waiting with bated breath and, and also thanking the foresight of, um, the folks that acquired so much of the vulnerable coastal areas for city ownership and city control in the past. Um, because that, that's, that's sort of the golden part of this plan for me now is we're, we're not in the straits that so many other, um, coastal communities are gonna find themselves in the future, um, because of that foresight. So, yeah, thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Vice Chair Mayor. Um, I think the, um, definitions, many of these are out of the Coastal Act, but we'll double check on those. And I think to the, the last point you made, um, which was a very large point, you know, I think maybe we should connect offline to, to see, um, you know, where those areas are, uh, that you're referring to. And then just going back a couple on the, um, you know, the comments that came up, many people said that they were, uh, you know, didn't have time to review the document, um, what we're looking forward to. And I just want to encourage folks to, you know, to take the time to do that. Um, there, there is currently time to do that. Yeah, and, you know, any of the other public comments that folks were interested in, uh, you know, digging in more detail on, I'd be happy to. Otherwise, you know, the way I look at this is that now we have this document out for public review. We can all spend the next, you know, period of time working through it and, you know, uh, digging into those devils that, uh, that, um, Vice Chair Mayor was looking for. And, um, and discussing them as a community. Uh, the other thing that kind of, uh, maybe worthwhile doing, you know, it's been a while since we had a sea level rise, a sea level rise, you know, discussion specifically targeted on sea level rise. Uh, much of what's in this document, all of what's in this document, not much, all of what's in this document with regard to our sea level rise strategy, uh, you know, came out of, uh, Planning Commission and the community meetings. And, um, you know, ultimately, not everybody may, um, agree with the approach that's proposed here. And, you know, I, I respect that, um, you know, but ultimately, we have to have this document be reflected, uh, in the way that the, you know, City of Arcata sees our approach, um, to sea level rise. I think to, um, you know, uh, Jennifer Calt's point, most of the area that would be subject to these protections, uh, are in the Coastal Commission's jurisdiction. And so what this document, uh, reflects in regards to those, uh, you know, those projects that, that could ultimately occur is our statement of policy from our point of view. Ultimately, if we propose any kind of protective structures, the Coastal Commission is going to be the one that, you know, decides whether or not to approve that. Um, and it could be that they look at this, um, local coastal program update and they say, you know, I'm sorry, we just can't permit that. That's not consistent with, you know, our view of the Coastal Act. Um, and then we'll work through that, you know, that series of discussions, um, you know, when we get to that point. Uh, I will also say that, you know, the, uh, coastal staff has been very, um, helpful uh, in hel- uh, in our bringing forward a sea level rise adaptation policy that reflects the, uh, community will that we received out of that public engagement, uh, previously that led up to it. Um, and at the same time, recognizing, um, you know, the, the limitations in the Coastal Act. And so, um, you know, there, there certainly may be still some honing to do, but I believe that we brought forward a, you know, a plan that could, that if there's a plan that has a chance for approval with the Coastal Commission, um, this is one.
Hey, thank you. Yeah, I think we all agree. We all need more time. So this needs to come back to us again and again. So, uh, does anyone have any more questions before we move on?
Yeah, not a question, a comment. Thank you to the city staff for working so diligently for all these years on this immense project.
Yes, thank you.
It's a labor of love. Thank you.
Okay, all right. So, uh, moving on to correspondence and or communications, do we have any from anybody?
I have a question.
Oh, go ahead.
All right, this is just a, a simple question to Julie. Do you hate it when we actually raise our hands versus on the computer screen? What do you prefer? You're muted.
Raised hand, as long as you remember to, to put it down.
So you want the electronic raise, not just the like, can I speak?
Oh, either one. I can see you. Yeah.
You're okay with either one? You're okay with either one then?
I keep a sharp eye on you guys. I know what you're doing. Yeah, I see you. Yeah.
Like either one. That's great.
Yeah. So no correspondence or communications?
No, I do have a couple of items for the commission. First is that the planning, I'm sorry, you are the planning commission. The city council will be taking up the goals and priority projects, portion of the budget, the budgeting for next fiscal year on March first. I believe that will start at six o'clock. The agenda is, is yet to be published, but look for that if you're interested in, in keying into the city's budgeting process. And then I will also relay that the, well, I'll put in a plug for the gateway plan and the committees will be reviewing, several committees will be reviewing the gateway plan over the course of the next month or so. And so if you want to learn more about that, keep an eye on our SERP page, S I R P. Arcata is the Google search term you're looking for will be the top hit. And then you can go to, how do I get involved? Follow that link and that'll tell you about upcoming meetings, or you can sign up for e-notifications on our city webpage, the main page. On the left-hand side, there's a series of links. One is called e-notifications. And if you sign up for the long range planning and community visioning, e-notifications, you'll get notifications about the gateway plan and other things involved in the SERP. Lastly, I wanted to let the commission know that the city council, I believe, is planning on going back in person in March. And so I know several of you have mentioned a desire to move back to in-person meetings as well. We don't have to take action or indicate on it, but I'd appreciate if you'd reach out to me independently and let me know your thoughts on that. The commission's planning, or I'm sorry, the council's planning on doing that sometime in March. And so sometime in March or April, we could be in the same, same situation. We'll be doing, you know, in-person meetings with a, a virtual option.
So is the city council going to budget any money for training? Yeah, training?
For trainings?
For us?
For specifically for in-person meetings or is that related to the, the request?
They're talking about they're working on their budget. I'm wondering if they're going to budget any money for training.
Gotcha. Yeah. So the, um, the city council did receive that request in the, the annual report. And certainly we as staff will put that into our, our budget request. And I think that, you know, planning commissioners, you know, being involved and engaged in that, you know, that process would be, you know, suitable. So we'll, we'll, we'll certainly make the recommendation again that we, you know, include some training budget.
Okay, thank you. Anything else?
Nothing from me. Sure.
Okay. Well, this meeting is adjourned. Good night, everyone.
Thank you.